To film it.
Like I said, if possible, have a ride over to the one with you, please.
Yes.
So they put on Medicare, but he has to carry a supplement for all prescriptions.
That's what's going on.
What's that?
I should have put on a certain time. That's terrible.
We'd like to call the meeting to order of November 5th, 2019, work session. The first agenda item is the Northwest County Plan. I believe Jerry's going to do that. Just as a reminder, the mics, make sure your mics are on if you're trying to communicate with anybody because they do kind of, they're a little touchy today.
Good morning. Jerry Lopez, Director of Redevelopment and Economic Opportunity. And we're here today to continue the discussion on the findings and next steps of the Northwest County Plan that we presented in August. To summarize, the purpose of the study was to lay out what steps could be taken to achieve the successful economic development of the northwest corner of the county with businesses and port-related uses. The study reviewed all of the existing plans and infrastructure, engaged stakeholders for feedback, and conducted a market analysis to understand our economic drivers and opportunities for pursuing them in this area. The process of getting all the information in one place and overlaying it with the results of the market analysis was incredibly valuable to get a good understanding of the realities on the ground and provide us a focus for moving forward. So as part of the presentation in August, the board had some very specific questions about the properties that were targeted for potential development in our Tier One, which is the land around US 41, the availability of utilities along these properties, and the future development of properties in Tiers Two and Three, and the alignment and analysis for Buckeye Road. So staff has completed this background and analysis to these questions, and we will be presenting the results of that today. We have three segments to the presentation this morning. I'll begin with the economic development portion, then I'll turn it over to Sia Malanazar to talk about the utilities piece, and then Clark Davis and Sia will then talk about the transportation piece of it. Then we'll each conclude with next steps in each of these focus areas. So this map here is, just shows you the entire Northwest County area, and we've divided it into the three tiers, Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. So it's really important to understand what is going on in the market to be able to understand the potential companies that would find the area around Port Manatee attractive for investment. And as we discussed previously, overall, Manatee County is losing share of industrial product to Hillsborough and Polk Counties, and the northwest Manatee area, though, has the opportunity to capture some of this anticipated growth if the area is properly positioned in the marketplace. The economic drivers over the next 10 years that are the best opportunities for realizing this potential are the e-commerce distribution, manufacturing, and of course, the growth around Port Manatee. So here in this slide, this is just a summary of the market analysis that we did, looking at the e-commerce, looking at over the next 10 years in an aggressive growth scenario, about 780,000 square feet of building in this industry target could be captured. On the manufacturing side, the estimate was about 530,000 square feet. So this totals about 1.3 million over the next 10 years that could be developed. So to accommodate 1.3 million square feet of growth, the estimated need is about 120 acres, and this is using a .25 floor area ratio. So just to summarize, we put a little table at the bottom about the acreage overall in each of the tiers. There's about 3,500 in Tier One, 1,400 in Tier Two, and about 6,700 in Tier Three. One of the main conclusions of the study is that there is enough land in the Tier One area that can reasonably accommodate this amount of growth, this projected growth. So to give you a better understanding of what this means, we conducted a deeper dive property analysis to truth test this conclusion. So we're using the example of the FedEx Building that's on Buckeye Road, just to give you an example and have a sense of what this really means. So this building, and this is just an airshot, but here's a plan shot. This building is approximately 175,000 square feet. So as we talked about, the 1.3 million, you'd need about seven of these buildings overall in this area to be able to accommodate this growth. So that's a lot of these amounts of buildings, so we just wanted to give you a little bit of context. So using, though, this building as part of our analysis, also to give you a little bit of context, a Home Depot is about 125,000 square feet. The Walmart Supercenters, that has everything, that's about the same size, that's about 175,000 square feet. And then to give you an example also of an industrial component, the Gatewood over in Lakewood Ranch, that's about double the size of that, so that's about 320,000 square feet. But this property overall, it's about 16 acres, and their FAR is about .25, so in conducting the analysis, this gives you a sense of that all of our numbers are matching what's here. And then in looking at the whole buildable area, it's approximately .75, so it covers all of the asphalt and is within that .75 of the full property. So we did an analysis on the Tier One properties. So here we divided it into the larger parcels and the smaller parcels. So we looked at parcels that are vacant for sale or lease or generally underutilized. This doesn't mean that we went through that these are all, these are all just those that look like that could have the opportunity to do that. So we divided it into the large parcels, those are the ones in yellow, and you do have maps on your seats if you, if this is hard to see, you can take a better look at that on your chairs. And the small parcels. So what we did is look at that buildable area. So we used those same numbers, that .75 overall for the same buildable area and the .25 for doing the building FAR, just to get a sense of where that breakdown would be. So these are the properties that are suitable for developments at that 500,000 square feet. This is for the buildable area. So there are eight properties in Tier One that meet this definition. They total 984 acres, and at that .25 FAR, you could potentially build up to 10 million square feet of building. So there's a lot of potential here. The good news is that they are all zoned PDEZ, which is the Port Development Encouragement zoning, so they are properly zoned in that regard. And we also looked at the small parcels. These are the ones that hit that below that 500,000 square feet. So there's about 20 properties in the small scale totaling 123 acres where you can build about 1.3 million square feet. Eighteen of those have the PDEZ heavy manufacturing or light manufacturing zoning, so they're all also zoned correctly. We then did a deeper dive of looking at, at least, what are the properties that we know are for sale, and we did a drive-through and took pictures of the signs and got a real sense of what was going on on the ground. So there are 12 properties that are known to be for sale. That totals about 688 acres. Four of those are those large parcels, and eight are those smaller parcels. One property is known to be for lease, although that, there's three parcels within that one property owner, which that totals 238 acres. All of these parcels are PDEZ, and all of them are major, there's major water and sewer transmission lines at or near the properties, and we'll talk a little bit more about that during Sia's portion of the presentation. So another one of the questions was about the flood zone, and so we overlaid the properties that are for sale with the flood zone. So as you can see, most of the properties for sale west of 41 are in the AE Zone, that's that red, that red area. So there are, the larger parcels that are east of 41 are outside of it, there's just a small portion of the HRK site that is within that classification. So this does not mean that you cannot develop these properties, it just means that the developer just needs to mitigate for that, either by elevating the building or floodproofing it. The other question was about the land prices for the area, and that is one of the challenges that we have overall in looking at the development of this. So we collaborated with the Bradenton area, EDC, and they conducted a comparative sales analysis, looking at different port properties all around the state and taking a look at how do we compare to them. So we pulled two other competitors. One is Brevard County where Port Canaveral is, and we just pulled a sample of some of the properties of where they are located near the port. And the average parcel, this is in terms of acreage for sale, is about seven acres, and the average cost of that is about $98,000 per acre. Polk County, which is definitely one of the competitors, especially on the distribution side, their average parcel size is about nine acres, that's on the market, and their average cost per acre is about $56,000. So when you compare that to Manatee County, we are a little bit higher, at least for those that are on the market. Our average parcel sizes are a little bit larger, there's about 23 acres per average size of the parcel, but that average cost, depending on, you know, this is a snapshot in time, too, I just want to make sure that at least when we pulled all this data, is about 135,000 per acre, and then if we included one that went, soon came on the market, it's about 120,000 per acre. One that just did recently come on the market seems to be in that 90 to 100,000 range, so it seems that we are at least becoming more in line with some competitor properties over in Brevard County. But that is still clearly one of the challenges when you're looking at the cost of land in this area when you compare it to other areas. So in, just to summarize the analysis that we did, looking at the land, that the conclusion is that there is enough land in this Tier One area to be able to accommodate a lot of this growth, and that there is infrastructure nearby to be able to provide for it. And the good news is that it is for sale or for lease, and again, with that infrastructure to be able to meet those demand projections. The other good news is that the zoning is in place for those parcels, as you saw. So our focus really needs to be on the positioning of the area, to be able to tell the story, to be able to engage the property owners and see what it is that we need to do to get that going. And then the challenge is, is that there's still the perceptions from, kind of, from discussions that were had previously, that the infrastructure isn't there, so we need to change that story. We still need to work on the land prices, and we do have the flood zone issue, but of course, if there are opportunities around the port, that's just, that makes sense as part of what needs to happen. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Sia Malanazar to talk about the utilities portion in it, to do a little bit more explanation of our master plan.
Do you? I just go down.
And this one is a pointer.
Yep, that was it.
That was it? Yeah.
Good mornings. Sia Malanazar with Public Works County Engineer. We're going to talk about utility infrastructure and basically water and sewer. First, we're going to start with our master plan. Just to get you oriented, you all could see the blue line, which is I-75 and II-75. This is all north county, north of the river, and you're all pretty familiar with this area, which is where the boom is, Amazons, Havel Heck, and Golf Course Road and all the development out there. The quiet, I will say, revolution is in this quadrant right here, and it's the direct result of the efforts they've set forth for the past five, six years in regard to sewer demand and sewer needs. Our main objective was really to address the needs for the Port Encouragement Zone, but the byproduct of it was this area just got boomed. I mean, there is a lot of development going on on Ellington, Gillette, Experimental Farm Road, Jackson Road, numerous, and it's all a result of the sewer participation and the effort that was set forth in 2013 and 14, where we changed the ordinances to deal with participation, we changed the master plan. The previous master plan was 2005, and it was a little bit convoluted. The transmission lines were running through wetlands and running through tight right-of-ways where we just didn't have the space. And we basically revisited, and this master plan was adopted in 2016, and currently we're working on changing it within the next six, seven months because of the growth in North County. But anyhow, as a result of, in the old days, basically what you had, by the way, the black line on this map shows all the sewer infrastructure in the ground. The red lines are what's needed, and the green, the green is what's needed, the red is built-out. So historically, there was a 10-inch force man on US 41, started from the jail going down, and it served the port area and what have you. And all the time, you would say there is no sewer availability and what have you. In 14, 2014, when we looked at the old master plan and how to address the needs, we ended up doing, I would say, almost close to, close to a dozen participation agreements with developers for their needs. We took the position that we're not the bankers, but we're here to help. If the numbers were feasible and utility could handle it from their funds, we would participate and what have you. In some scenarios, some of these transmission line went in the ground, that first guy participated with the county, we participated with three others that supplement the fund to go into the same line. The result of it basically was that made this 10-inch force man available for the port area. And 10-inch force man is a pretty large force man. We're not talking about gravity, we're talking about pressurized sewer system. So as a result, like I said, sewer became somewhat available, and this area just got really developed. We took that map and basically made this based on the master plan for Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. Once again, the black lines are the sewers that are in the ground and serving the area. The red line, predominantly the red line is what's needed. And I call these red line, for example, here, here, or even here, I call it same as if you could envision a subdivision. When you build a subdivision, you put the sewer in the middle of the street, and for the houses to connect to the sewer, they have to run their own sewer service from the house to the sewer in the ground in the street. So I will call these red line same thing. If this parcel gets developed, which is Curiosity Creek, Curiosity Creek should put a lift station somewhere in this property, we guesstimated, maybe it's over here, and run their sewer need to the main transmission line. So black line are existing, red, we call it in this graphic service area, service line. And these service line needs to be installed by the developers. The green lines, solid green lines, are those participation that I talked to you earlier. Those are executed participation agreement where the developer installs the line that serves their need, but it has enough capacity that follows our master plan for the remainder of the undeveloped properties. Then we have what I call green with the hatched black. These green with hatched black are basically business decisions that we've made with different developers, they're in the works, we're working on the agreement, but nothing has been executed. But they are in the work, so we have a good standing with the community out there, and we know it's going to happen, but it's just a matter of time. Then that leaves basically the two blue line. This blue line basically is Horizon Lake. Horizon Lake, and that follows Horizon Lake Boulevard. And this last phase of Horizon Lake, that remains to be seen, when will it develop? As you know, it's been going on for what, probably more than 15 years now. It's a little bit out of our control, when can we address this line, this blue line and this other blue line over here on Buckeye Road? Basically, what this does, it provides, this is Sweetwater, Newport, and Curiosity Creek. These are the old plans from back in the booms, 2006, 2007, and what have you. And most of them, I believe, all three of them have expired since, and I believe this one's got an active borrow pit permit on it. But anyhow, if, the master plan basically suggests that the service line from Sweetwater will come down, will go through the future blue line, and then go through Horizon Lake. From Horizon Lake, it comes through Moccasen Wallow and goes to this solid black existing force man, which was done back in the boom again. This was a participation among a dozen developers in those years that they literally designed, funded, and constructed and turned it over. There is an agreement out there for this that basically provides for county to guarantee their investment in the future, meaning we can't give up the sewer they installed and give it to somebody else. But anyhow, if these three, for example, right now the master plan suggests this needs to come down, go through this blue line, and go through Horizon Lake and come through here. If they come through, if there is an application, we will work with them and figure out a way how to install this, and we are open to that discussion. So once again, the green are executed agreement, they're either in the construction or in near future, and these other three hatch during the works being discussed. Let's see, what else was there on this map? So again, here's Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. So on Tier One, we're suggesting sewer is available for this entire purple area. If there is a development out there, the sewer is there, so long as they're not water-dependent type of a development, meaning it's a development that requires cooling water. Then cooling water has a byproduct, which is you have to have a big sewer capacity to receive that cooling water. So we're not set up for that type of scheme, but a regular industrial, commercial development sewer is available. The big red line that you see over here, I'll call it again, service, is a six-inch line that goes to, this is the Reader's Property. As you see, Reader's Property, only on the top at the tip, there is Reader's Property right here, and then there's a small piece out there. Now, if something happens over here, we could install this with Reader's cooperation and what have you, but until then, there's, it doesn't really make sense to install this for them to come. We're not in a speculation business, we're not in a development business, we're in public service. So this is the line that dedicated basically to Reader's Ranch. And from that, we will move on to, whoops, to, okay. This one is a water master plan. Water, we have been very fortunate, and I give most of the credit to some of the predecessors, if you all remember John Zimmerman, and right now Mark Simpson, he's pretty good, too. We've been, they concentrated where water is needed, they concentrated on water quality and looping the system. And that effort is being continued by Mark Simpson and the team, and from that standpoint, water has a better situation for the development in the whole area. As you could see, again, Tier One, the black lines are the water line in the ground. There is water everywhere. The only missing water line is again, this piece over here, and once again, Horizon Boulevard, which is out of our control. But if these two, for example, come through, we have water on this side, we have water on that side, this is not really something to worry about. It could easily be accomplished with the participation and what have you, and it won't be something that will burn the county as a result of, but we could accommodate it. So all of these black line is basically a water line in the area. So Tier One, we're in a perfect situation, water is available. Tier Two and Three, the missing link is the Buckeye Road, but there is water on both sides. There is water on both sides. So that's the issue with the water. So to summarize, for Tier One at least, water and sewer, the existing major transmission line are either at or near the properties. So if they come tomorrow, want to develop, we have availability of water and sewer. The only caveat is, again, the red line that we talked about, they need to install the red line. Basically, what their needs are, connect what your needs are to the black line that was on the map, which is the existing line. From that standpoint, the capacity does exist in the line, in the ground itself, and at the plant. And once again, the availability is not necessarily for water-dependent type of a business. If it's industrial, commercial, you know, you're talking about bathrooms and things in that nature, no problem at all. But if somebody comes in, it was years ago, it was a biomass, if I believe, Karen remembers the name better, and they were going to, I believe they were going to do biodiesel fuel or something, and they needed a lot of cooling water. And then at the end of that, receiving all that water, then they had to get rid of the water, so it was a double whammy. Not even, I need big quantity of water, but also I need a big transmission to take the water back from them. So we're not set up for that, but nor is the door closed for that type of business. We're open for discussion. Okay, this basically, once again, talking about the sewer, and these are again, the service line, all these three, these are the old applications, Sweetwater, Newport, Curiosity Creek, all three, their application expired back in 1516, and borrow pit going on here. And if any of these three in Tier Two and Tier Three are ready to move forward, we could have a discussion to address their need for the sewer, which is the Buckeye Road line out here, and we will prepare to address that. So summarizing the Tier Two and Tier Three, basically existing, their service line, which is the red line, they need to install that. The sewer transmission is in the ground at or near the property. And we're open for discussion and participation. We typically, basically, we don't participate in things that basically, it's like, I don't know, it's one-third you, two-thirds, two-thirds is you, one-third is me type of thing. It has to be a deal that, one, the utility could agree to it. It has to be a deal that, that, one, the utility could agree to it, and funds are available for it. Two, it won't, it wouldn't take away from other priorities in the county. And we're open for discussion in those, on those matter. And I already talked about the funding priorities and timing. And another reason we don't basically install sewer lines, specifically sewer line, in anticipation of, if you install it, they will come, is a liability. A, a, an empty line for water, for example, the water quality is an issue. You don't want stagnated water sitting in the line that nobody at the other end opens up or utilize it. Therefore, the water is stagnating inside the pipeline and gets old and water quality deteriorates. Same thing for the sewer. You can't install sewer that doesn't have, especially a force man, that doesn't have any flows in it. Things will cake up inside the pipeline. And if it does, then you really got a nightmare on you. So it needs to be constantly flowing. As a result, you don't install with anticipation of they will come. Summarizing, tier one, we believe we're in a good shape from standpoint of water and sewer. And we have been, we're in very close communication with all the active developments. We're not aware of anybody out there actively working something on, on tier one that needs help or what have you. But the ones that are active, we're working with them on participation and their plan moving forward. With that, with that, I'll turn it over to Clark.
Good morning. Thank you. For the record, Clark Davis, Deputy Director of Traffic Management. The transportation part stems from discussion at the last work session. There were some questions about plans, I think specifically for Buckeye Road. And the word "plan" means different things to different people. There's sort of your, your comp plan, long-range vision of the road network. And then some people think of plans as, you know, final engineering design, a set of plans that's on a shelf and ready to build a road. For this area, we're not quite at that end of the story, but we have looked at our long-range needs for the area, and we've started to look at some of the specifics of how we can improve some roads, in particular Buckeye. And I'll set the table for that and let Sia go through some of the engineering details. So looking at our long-range traffic circulation plan, this particular version of the map shows the roads by facility type. So the green is the interstate. The red roads are the arterial roadway network. These, over time, become the, the roads that serve the long trips at high speeds, don't have as many access locations. And then finally, the blue roads are what you'd call collector-distributor roads. They are the connections between the access roads, neighborhood streets that aren't shown on here, and individual subdivision roads, both commercial and residential, but tie between the arterial network and the local access roadway network. On this map, most of the existing roads are in, towards the south half of this map. So Piney Point extended the balance of Orizon Lakes Parkway and Gateway north of Buckeye. And Sweetwater are not built yet, but all of these roads are planned to be four or more lanes in the future. Today, the area is served primarily by US 41, Buckeye Road, and the connections of 41 and Bud Roden from Buckeye Road down to Moccasen Wallow, down to 275. The volumes on the road today are not extremely high. On US 41, they're in the ballpark of 12,000 vehicles per day down near Buckeye. They're a little bit higher near, near the port, but still, we're talking about 12,000 to 15,000 cars per day on those roads. And then on Buckeye Road, it's less than 1,500 vehicles per day near the port. So in the area of Bud Roden and US 41. And they're lower as you go farther east toward the interstate. The point here is that the Buckeye, in theory, is operating at about 10% of its capacity, and US 41 is about half its capacity. Another way of looking at that is you could add, say, 12,000 to 15,000 vehicles per day to any one of these roads, and you would, you would start getting closer to their actual capacity. So there's a lot of room on the roads today. And I use the term "in theory" because it assumes that you've got the right types of turn lanes and things like that at individual intersections. And if you've driven Buckeye Road, you know that we don't have a lot of auxiliary lanes on that road. It's just a straight shot of two lanes. So you don't have turn lanes at intersections. And so before we got to the point that we would need to add extra lanes, we might need to add turn lanes at those locations, might even look at signals, but we still think there'd have to be a significant traffic increase before we need to program an improvement. A couple of years ago, though, we had been looking at some alternatives. We knew we were gonna face some challenges someday to widen Buckeye Road. So we had started looking at some alternatives to overcome those challenges, primarily associated with right-of-way. We evaluated three different options, shown here as options one, two, and three. Option one is Buckeye Road remaining on its existing alignment. The engineering team has looked at this in a little more detail and evaluated each of these different alignments. And I, I will spoil the surprise and tell you that we think that the plan we have in place today to use a, a future Buckeye along option one alignment is the best approach. But Sia will tell you a little bit about what was evaluated and how we came to that conclusion.
Thank you. So the three options out here are the same option we looked at about three years ago. There was some request that what can be done to Buckeye Road? And at the time, we were, we concentrated, looking at the Buckeye Road right-of-way and the constraints that are out there on the south side. You got, you got the FPNL, you got Gulf Coast Gas Line, you got, you got the Piney Point on the north side, where those two lakes are, where, when they fill them back in, there were liner to, to stop the leachate of the water down to the groundwater table. So there is a liner in the right-of-way. And not having all the information at the time, three years ago, we came up with these three concepts of option one, option two, option three. For the purpose of this meeting, we, our engineering team concentrated on gathering information and data, and requested the ASB building information for the liner on the phosphate. We got the ASB building information from, from the gas people and, and the FPNL. And, and we updated the three options, which are as follow. So based on the information and that Clark alluded to in regard to the capacity and what have you, the, the left slide basically shows what the existing conditions are, which is basically a two-lane, two-lane road out over here. You got two, on the, on the US 41. This is US 41, and this is Buckeye. So this is your existing condition. The existing condition out here on Buckeye, you got varying right-of-way, existing right-of-way. At the beginning, right at 41T, we got 85 feet. It reduces almost to 70. Once you pass the gas administration building and what have you, it changes to 100, and it goes on. So we looked at this. Now that we have the information about the power line, the gas line, and the liner, we were able to do this configuration, which is basically dual-left, so again, US 41, Buckeye. So dual-left, one-right, and dual-left over here. We're able to build this within the existing right-of-way, 85 feet. And we think that will suffice without touching or dealing with the liner that is in the right-of-way, or FPNL, or gas line. So this is a doable intersection, T-intersection. Our typical right-of-way for this type of work is 120. We have squeezed it into that existing 85 feet. So this is now bird's eye view of the same spot. The red is the FPNL right-of-way. Our black line right here is the existing right-of-way. And within this existing, you got the liner protruding nearby the existing right-of-way that we do not wanna touch or hit. So this is basically the lineage work. And right out here, so from here to here is about 85 feet wide, and then it changes to 70. In this area, we envisioning, this purple line over here is the sidewalk. We're envisioning to reaching out to FPNL, get a pedestrian easement, and, and install that sidewalk. And heading, heading east, we get to existing 100-foot right-of-way out here. And so the road could be, the, the medium becomes larger out, out here, about 22 feet. And we could again, fit that in that 100-foot existing right-of-way. So some of the construction costs that we looked at, these are all based on FDOT long-range estimate. And in it, has 15% contingency for engineering, for design and construction. So the option one, which is basically using the Buckeye Road, existing alignment, so we're gonna utilize the existing Buckeye Road. And the construction estimate based on long-range estimate is 29 million. Right-of-way acquisition, based on the information we received from property management, which are, they're pretty good pen, penning down what their square foot dollar value is. We came up with 1.8 million and 31. The only catch with this 31 million is that there is no stormwater in it. To get the stormwater pond site located and what have you, you really need to get into 10%, 30% plan set. You need to have survey. You have to do some engineering work to identify your pond site and calculate how much area you need and what have you in order to do so. So all three estimate, there is no stormwater cost in them. So option one is that 31 million. Option two, which is the one north of Buckeye Road, we're at total of 50, 50, almost 51 million. Notice the right-of-way acquisition is around 10 million. Option three, which is to the south, we're using Chapman Road, portion of the Chapman Road right-of-way, but there is an S curve going back to the Buckeye Road. And that's, that right-of-way cost is 12 and a half. So 46, call it 47. 47 and 51 versus 31. So this really pops at you. At 31, it really pops at you. So what are the pros and cons for option one? Option one, use the existing Buckeye Road from US 41, go all the way toward I-75. It, it, right off the get-go is the 31 million versus 51 million. So 31 million is, is the, the advantage. It's the least right-of-way requirement section because we're squeezing everything into 85 feet and then existing 100 feet. So it's the least right-of-way, right-of-way need. It's consistent with current comprehensive plan. This goes back to the map that Clark showed about circulation map and the future roadway network. It's already on the map. It's consistent with our comp plan since it was adopted. There are, there are two parcels out there. The county owns the 42 acre and 28 acres. I understand Jerry and the team have some grand ideas for those parcel. We think we could coordinate, not necessarily hugging up the whole 42 acre, but maybe we could do a pond site that could benefit their venture and address the county's need on the roadside. So that's just, just, just out there. It's, it's attractive thing out there that we could, we should look at. Existing road can be approved. So this talks about the existing 85 feet that we could utilize to get the four lanes in. And US 41 Buckeye Road intersection has sufficient, yeah, that's the, we're squeezing again, four lane in 85. Up to now, everything is within 120 feet right-of-way. The, the exemption from it is Port Harbor Parkway, which was beyond our control. It was a lawsuit with Lennar and what have you. We squeezing that one in 100-foot right-of-way. Now, we're going one step beyond, and we're squeezing it into 85 feet. So what are the disadvantage of it? Disadvantage is limited right-of-way for, disadvantage is basically, we, we're doing it in 85 to 70 feet right-of-way versus 120 feet. I don't know if it's disadvantage or advantage, but it's not a county standard. County standard is 120 feet. And because of that, the, because of that, our typical section that you all adopted through our standard shows four-lane thoroughfare in 120 feet. So mu, it's got bike lane, wide median and what have you. All of that needs to be deviated from, and that's what that third bullet is about. We gonna have to reach out to FPNL to get pedestrian easement. I think we're, we could pull that off. We're already working on one on Erie Road from FPNL trying to get a pedestrian easement. Now, keep in mind in that stretch that there is 70 feet. We can't, you can't install turn lanes. You can't have the cake and eat it too. There is no turn lane in that location. So if somebody shows up in that, in that stretch of 70 feet that wants to develop, they need to build their own turn lanes and what have you, or dedicate right-of-way. And remember, there is a big slurry wall and liner at the phosphate immediately near US 41 that we wanna stay away from. We don't wanna touch it. So those are the pros and cons of option one. Pros and cons of option two. Option two is the one to the north. Right off the get-go, this option two, you need 120 feet of right-of-way, brand-new land, brand-new land acquisition. If you get the 120 feet right-of-way, then you could build a county standard road in that 120-foot right-of-way. That's an advantage. And when you do that, you buy all of these right-of-way and build this four-lane, obviously, the advantage is property values on frontage of that stretch gonna go sky-high. You have created a humongous commercial frontage. Some of the disadvantages, the cost. The cost is through the roof. The, the amount of land that you need for 120 feet for 2.8 miles. Now, when you get this new right-of-way through Piney Point HRK, now you're getting into an area of unknown, unforeseen condition. What's buried? Are we gonna have something popping out? Is there environmental issues? How do we deal with it? So that's, that's, that's the unforeseen, unknown condition on Piney Point piece. It requires the map that Clark showed about the county network. That road is not on the map. You have to amend your comp man, comp plan and the map. And that's, that's the one it's talking about. And also, that road on future map, Buckeye right now connects to Bud Roden. This will not allow that, this option. So it needs a lot of land. And if you go with option two, you still have Buckeye Road. Buckeye Road doesn't just go away. You still have to deal with it. So you spent 50 million, 51 million on option two. You still have to deal with Buckeye Road. It's on your comp plan. You still have to maintain it. You have to also address its needs in the future. And there are potential wetland on that option two route. And, and, and one other thing it could, it could do, if you go with option two, you, we don't know what the plans of those landowner in that option two areas are. By virtue of putting the road over there, you basically bisecting their land. Half of it will be on one side, half of it won't be on the other side. You don't know if you're gonna get into some kind of business damage or, or what. So those are some of the disadvantage of the option two. So pros and cons of option three. Once again, it requires a lot of right-of-way. Even though we're using portion of the Chapman Road at US 41, once you go beyond, and then we did the S curve to bring it to Buckeye, that's the new right-of-way, 120 feet right-of-way. it to Buckeye, that's the new right-of-way, 120 feet right-of-way you needed. Uh, the advantage, if you have 120 feet, you could build a county standard road in 120 feet. That's the advantage. And, and we are using a portion of the Chapman Road. Some of the disadvantages, uh, the, again, the cost is through the roof, 47 million. Uh, requires a lot of land, 120 feet, point 97, it's almost a mile, and that's the S curve. Uh, it, since it's not on the, uh, network of the road county-wide, you need to amend the comp plan to put that road on the comp plan. This is another one. Chapman Road is a local road. It's not on your map. You're basically converting a local road now to a thoroughfare. Uh, so that, that deals with that. So then when, when you build the option three, obviously you're going south to come back north and what have you. And, uh, a lot of land we need on that option. And once again, on this scenario, you spend that money on option three, you still got Buckeye Road. Buckeye Road will never go away. You still have to deal with it. You still have to maintain it. You still have to address it. Uh, and in that area, there are a lot of residential. Again, you're converting a local road to a thoroughfare. Now residential neighborhood becomes, uh, uh, frontage, uh, on a thoroughfare. Uh, there is a lot of wetland impacts out there that could raise this cost because, uh, this, we, we didn't look at the wetland issues. And, uh, once again, it has the same effect as option two. When you take the land from the landowner, you dissecting their land. You put half of it on one side, the other half of it on the other side. You could get into a business damage or other foreseen conditions. So, uh, staff recommendation is basically stick to the Buckeye Road. Uh, it's the least cost, uh, it's the least effort. Uh, we could build the four-lane, uh, and, uh, some of the existing right-of-way we will use, we will get easement from FPNL for the sidewalk and, uh, and, uh, it's less constrained than option two and three. It, it's on your map five, uh, comp plan, so there's not an issue there. And, uh, and it's the least expensive option. Because of that, uh, we don't, we don't recommend option two and three. I'm turning it over to you, I think.
So we've laid out, uh, economic development, utilities and roads. And so this is sort of unwinding it with some recommendations and some thoughts here at the end. For transportation, the, the idea is to do as we would in any part of the county where there's a lot of latent potential is, uh, continue monitoring it. Watch the development. In the case of tr, of transportation, you don't have to develop in that immediate area. Traffic pressures can come from other areas. So we need to watch both of those together, but independently as well. And then, uh, as we do that, consider the timing of any improvements we might make against other competing needs. As Cia was discussing as part of the utility, part of the presentation, the, uh, there's residential development occurring in the northwest part of the county, south of the port area that is putting a lot of pressure on roads. We're also seeing a development across the interstate in North County also. And so all of these things create pressure on our capital resources, uh, to implement projects. But, um, as we approach that day where we need to move forward, the things we need to do is continue the preliminary engineering exercises that Cia has been talking about, that right now it's just a concept, but at relatively low cost, we could, uh, get a little bit farther into plans. Then, once we've gotten through that initial step, maybe some of the survey and concepts and verifying the rights of way that are available, it does become a larger capital undertaking. And so that, then it'll depend on what the other projects are. We would want to bring that back to the board when you consider your capital improvement program and, and look at whether or not it's time to implement a Buckeye Road project, whether it's on a large scale or focusing, focusing on intersections that might become, uh, needed first. But give you an idea that we, we think we've got sort of the basic road network that we need in place today. It's a matter of watching it and, and making sure that we get the projects in place in time as the area evolves. There are similar considerations for utilities. Um, I, do you want to come back up for this, Cia? So, um, like the transportation plan, um, we've got a, uh, instead of a long-range transportation plan or traffic circulation plan, we've got our wastewater and potable water master plans. We think we have the infrastructure in place to serve development primarily within the tier one area, you know, along the 41 corridor and Buckeye Road as you extend a little bit east of the port area. But then, just like roads, we need to watch development and trends in the area, work with the developers as new, uh, develop, as their projects come online to extend the service lines, work with them on implementing the balance of the master plan. But again, it's just about an organized approach to implementing projects. Again, they're very large projects. They have upfront capital costs and continuing maintenance costs. We have to be very careful about because if we build the wrong thing too early, um, it, it can damage our ability to take care of place, other parts of the county where the needs are, might be greater at that time. And then finally, um, I'll ask Jerry to come up and help with the economic wrap-up.
All right, last slide. So just wrapping up on the economic development side, um, our next steps really is to market the area, to position the land around the port for that manufacturing and distribution as our targets. Um, and this is one where we, um, the EDC kind of takes the lead on this one and we will work collaboratively with them on that. Target potential users based on, um, the market analysis. Again, this is one where the, uh, EDC will take the lead and we will work with them. Uh, brainstorm ideas for branding, um, of the area, um, again, as part of that positioning, um, taking a look at what that means and, uh, working on that. Again, that would be, um, working with the EDC. Uh, meeting with the property owners to get up-to-date information on the properties for sale and lease. This is one where we will work collaborative with them on them, just to, um, give them update on where we are, what we're doing and get information from them as best we can. So we have that up-to-date info. Uh, the other area is that we want to explore options, um, for the county-owned lands that we do own on Buckeye. We own that 40 acres. Um, so this is a, a significant piece, uh, that we want to, uh, we feel that this could be something that could be developed as a business park using some customized incentives. So we will look at, what does this mean? How does this detail? How does this kind of work out? Uh, if there are pieces that are needed for stormwater, as Cia mentioned, as we go through with the Buckeye Road development. But we want to take a real deep dive into that property to see what we can do to try to help kind of get, uh, activity going if this is especially land that the county owns. And, uh, lastly, but very importantly, is to establish that clear messaging, um, about, both internally and externally about the infrastructure. Cause before, there's been a lot of time where, uh, and for a long time that there's just been just misperception out there about really what's available. And now with all of this, we have new maps and new information that we can establish and real clear talking points and set that clear messaging about what is, um, what really is available. So from that economic development standpoint, our focus for right now really is on tier one, knowing that, um, tier two and tier three are out there, that as things happen, we'll work with, um, the, the developers and, uh, potential users, understanding, um, the limitations on the utility side. But we do have a huge opportunity on tier one to get some, um, activity going. So with that, we're all here to answer, um, any questions that, uh, that you may have.
Thank you. Great presentation, very informative. Uh, first up, uh, Betsy, I think, has some questions, then Misty.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is very helpful, um, a lot more information. I did take the opportunity to go through the booklet that we were given, the Northwest County Plan, and look at that in great detail, dive down, have a lot of questions. But that really wasn't what we talked about. So I'll try to address my questions more toward the presentation today, but I might have a couple of questions based on some things that I saw. And, uh, first off, I, I'm a little bit confused that we don't have anyone from the port here. I mean, this is very important. I did talk to Carlos about it, uh, and he said he would be here. So I know that planning at this level isn't really exciting. Clark, you alluded to that, um, you know, that, you know, what do we talk about? When we talk about planning, it could be at a very big, you know, what, what we like to call the marker stage, right, of planning, where you just have markers on a map or when you actually get down to construction plans.
Where's the port?
Um, yeah. So, um, and this is very important. This is a very important focus area for our county. So I appreciate us looking at this in more detail and we'll continue to do so. We've been doing so for a long time. It's just a chicken or the egg kind of thing. We're white, right? That's what we're waiting for. We're waiting for the next big thing. But I do have a question. So how many square feet is, and, and this is relative, how many square feet is Bender Son building at that, uh, approved development at, um,
A million.
At 301 and I-75 approximately? How many square feet are they building in that distribution center?
Yeah, it's about a million.
It was a million.
Okay. So a million square feet, and that, that was never really planned for by the county per se. It was property that was designated mixed use, right? So we knew something was gonna come, but sure enough, all of a sudden, we have a million square feet of development coming forward. So it could happen, just saying, it could happen. Um, and, and I know that when we look at the, what is possible out here, so I just wanted to throw that out. And of course, there's challenges there, big time challenges, right? On roads, we know that, and we knew that that's a big issue and is continuing to be a big issue. So trying to get ahead of it, I appreciate, I really do appreciate the effort. The other thing that, uh, I think, um, maybe we need to be aware of that I didn't hear anything about, and I know it's long-range, is kind of the long-range plans for I-75, uh, especially given that we are next in line for this multimodal capacity, um, lanes that are coming through Hillsborough and Pinellas County. Reggie, you might know more about that than I do because it's been a T-BARDA issue. But it, we are next in line as far as that planning moving down south, and it could have an effect on the interchange at Buckeye. I know also, we've talked a lot about whether or not there could or couldn't be an interchange at Buckeye. I still maintain that DOT has said, with the right proposed development, i.e. a truck stop, it's a possibility. I, I don't know if you guys had any other conversations about that? Has there been any conversations with anyone at DOT about that? I mean, I heard that at a work session a long time ago, um, but I, you know, I don't know anything more on that.
We haven't had recent conversations with FDOT, but when the Port Connector Project Development Environmental Study was basically put on the shelf, one of the alignments that was still in play was Buckeye Road. So the implication was that they were at least considering the potential for an interchange there. They were still looking at the one, if you remember the map I had up a few minutes ago, the, the Piney Point extended, a Port Connector Road along the county line, so one there. It makes sense that somewhere between Valroy and Southern Hillsborough, the county line or Buckeye, that there be another interchange. We're trying to make that more clear in our thoroughfare plan update showing interchange study area. So I wouldn't rule it out entirely. It seems a little bit tight compared, in terms of spacing compared, because it's so close to Mox and Walla Road, but it's something, just playing odds, gonna be needed in that area eventually. And so Buckeye's should still be in play at this point.
Yeah, and, and while you're up there, I'll try to address my questions to you then. So yeah, I'm glad you brought up that Valroy area because we know they're planning. We know they're planning. And they say, it says in this, um, draft or whatever, this report that we had, which is a very good report, by the way, a lot of good information. It does talk about 6,000 acres of common ownership in the Little Manatee South Community Plan area that they're talking about providing for development because of its close proximity to Port Manatee. So failure to plan interruption will be an opportunity for Hillsborough County. I just believe that's true. Um, I know that they've had some issues in terms of looking at that, whether or not it should be brought into their urban service area. I know that's been an issue. But if you read what is on page, really hard to read, 44 of this, it, it, it lays it out pretty well, what is the opportunity in Southern Hillsborough County because of the proximity of the plant. The other thing I wanted to ask about is the Piney Point extension. I know during the planning process, there was some right-of-way that was actually set aside in those plans. And I, you know, the PDZ plans, Row was, you know, you could go residential or you could go industrial. So is there still, um, Piney Point extension, is that on our comprehensive plan? Is that a plan, thoroughfare?
It is on our comprehensive plan. All of the red and blue and green lines that were up on the, the screen a little bit ago, and I can back up. Maybe?
They were. I thought it was dropped.
Uh, apologize to do this a different way.
It's okay.
That's all right, we're getting there.
All right. So the roads on here, this is from our, our functional classification map, looking long-term. And so the, these are the adopted roadways. A little bit harder to read the black text, but for the most part, these are four-lane roads. Mox and Walla's plan for six and Piney Point going into the port is just two. But the rest of these are four-lane roadways and the red ones are arterials, so big roads that could conceivably connect and in some cases do connect to the interstate already. Um, and then the, the rest are collectors. So we might look at Buckeye Road differently if we were to get a interchange approved at that location, you know, and may start thinking of it as an arterial roadway because those connections between the US highway system and the interstate tend to be, uh, fairly busy roads. But it, it is still part of our plan.
Okay. And I know, I know in the very preliminary long-range transportation plan update, there was a need in the long range, you know, in the plan that we're in right now, planning process, right? There was, there was shown as opposed to at the time, the Port Connector Road was under the PDNE process and there wasn't a need, so we stopped the process. But it's my understanding, the current planning process, and I don't know when it gets finished, Clark, you may know better than I do, the update to the long-range transportation plan did show a need for a, another connector, right?
Yeah, they're in an update now. The, we're under what we call the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan. Currently, they're developing their 2045 plan, which they should adopt by the end of next year. The, before our current plan, we were still looking at planning based on, say, boom era economic activity, even though the, the plan itself wasn't wrapped up until the, the Great Recession had begun. A lot of the trends had been established by stuff that was a couple of years earlier than that. And, and so there were a lot of roads showing up that were, were needed, that looked like were, they're gonna be needed much later, just because, you know, the boom was an unsustainable period of growth, you know, we just weren't gonna be able to keep that up indefinitely. Um, so it's been tempered a bit, but during the 2040 plan stage, I, I remember very clearly Port staff working with a consultant and, and talking to Manatee County about road network and land use plans for the area. And it does show up as an emerging need towards the end of the 2040 period. So it makes sense that it's part of the 2045 update that'll show up again around that same period, say 2035 to 2045 range, as needing more additional east-west capacity in, in that area.
Okay. Good, thank you. And then, uh, so this is our, our traffic circulation map. We're showing Buckeye, four lanes, 150, and we're saying, well, we probably, obviously aren't gonna have 150 foot of right-of-way. And I, I just wanted to make sure, I know that we all got, and it was a while ago, information from the gas, about a gas line expansion. Has that been programmed in to this as well, the gas line expansion that they're talking about?
Um, I didn't know there was an expansion. There's the existing gas line that they've got, uh, it's a high-pressure line that runs out of the port and along the north edge of HRK and then down towards Buckeye Road. So say around the north and east edges of the stacks, I don't, that is.
I thought the expansion was on the building.
Uh, and the expansion is to the treatment, I think. It's not necess, I don't.
I should stop touching things.
Okay. The expansion is to the, uh, treatment area. I just want to make sure, since it's so tight, that we are aware of that because it is something that we all got notice on.
Okay. Um, we don't believe that they'll be constructing that within road right-of-way, so we're trying, so regardless where they end up, well, as long as they stay out of the existing road right-of-way, we think we can work with the rest. The plan shows in 150 feet. The implication is that we were thinking this would be built as a four-lane undivided section, so, you know, open ditches and things like that. Based on our review of the right-of-way, even if we didn't have the constraints imposed by the stack and utility lines, it makes more sense to have a suburban section, you know, with closed drainage and what would be 120 feet right-of-way. We're having to compromise even more than that to, to account for the utility impacts. If they'll stay in right-of-way or easements they've already got, leave the road right-of-way alone, though, uh, the, the plan that Cia laid out is feasible.
And the, in the necessary, I mean, we, we have, uh, capacity apparently for water and sewer in tier one. Capacity and infrastructure, only in tier one. Everything else is planned for, which is good. Is there capacity, plant, and I think I've probably done with you, Clark. Is there plant capacity in, to be able to handle, or is that something that has to be looked at in this area? If we go beyond tier one, I don't, I don't really think there's that much land available in tier one. I didn't see it in. I didn't see it is because you've got the HRK, you've got Air Products, you've got, obviously Reader is available land. I don't know what their situation is, but is there to handle future development? Is there plant capacity, or would that need to be looked at as well, outside of Tier One?
One of the slides, we talked about plant capacity is available for Tier Two and Tier Three. Keep in mind, when, for Tier Two and Tier Three, it goes back, I use the terminology of the White Hat Agreement years ago, when they installed the main line, which was, which was going to the plant and going through Artisan Lake. We allowed it to happen. The line are in the ground with a notion there will be flows in it that's going to the plant, so they were accounted for.
Okay. So that's, I mean, there, so there's no lines today beyond this black line and Buckeye Road, right? There's no lines existing, but you said the blue line was planned for, so.
Correct.
Is there adequate, in the 80 or 70-foot of right-of-way, can you accommodate the sewer and the water line along with the road? Is that adequate?
There is a stretch as you go east on Buckeye beyond the gas and Piney Point that becomes 100 foot.
100 foot, okay. So you could accommodate it, and somehow you'll, you know, you've already got it existing. Is that, in the black, that's sewer, and there's water in there as well?
Yes, and.
That's the water.
Our thought was, if you go back to the slide before.
So you just build the road over the top of the water and sewer lines?
If there was something happening here, we could allow temporarily come down this line. Right now, it's supposed to, these are designed to go through the balloon, go down here, and come back going to here. So there's a shortcut right here for enter. So that could be accommodated if there's somebody serious out there.
Okay. All right. I think those were all my questions. The only other one is, and I can't remember if you showed a map, did you show a map of Tier One land available? Was there a map that showed that? I tried to find it in my package, I couldn't see it.
Yeah, yeah. It was just the area.
Okay.
This is the land in Tier One that's known to us to be for sale or leased. Most of them are for sale.
Okay, and the.
And that totals 688 acres.
Okay, so the land that is basically HRK is colored differently?
Yes, so we wanted to, thank you for asking that. We did take out the part of HRK that is undevelopable. That is the part that is hashed. So in looking at the acreage that is available, we did account for the wetlands, so we did take that out. So this is the acreage that is available to be developed.
And the land that is immediately adjacent to Port Manatee, isn't that already platted as an industrial park on the, you know, just south of the port, on the western side? Going back to your slide that you just had, maybe, or maybe you're showing it there. Isn't that already a platted industrial park?
It's the Reader Park.
It's the what park?
It is, yes.
Yeah.
It's a Reader development.
Reader, we had like a lawsuit with them forever about the access, and we finally settled that.
And then the synergy was going to buy it, but I don't know if they ever did.
Right. You know what I'm talking about, Jerry?
Yep.
The Reader Industrial Park?
Yep.
It is platted. It's not something, it is platted.
Okay, yeah.
We dedicated it. It's very platted.
But we haven't seen any activity in any of those areas. Is that, I mean, maybe you can't say? It's warranted secrecy? Have to kill me? But is there, has there been any activity in those areas?
We have just calls and we get interest, but I would say there's nothing serious that we've been aware of.
Okay, thank you. Good presentation.
Ms. Dean?
Yeah, thank you. It's kind of fun serving on this board with Betsy because I just checked off a bunch of the questions that I had. Great presentation, really, really informative. So going back to what Betsy said about looking at Hillsborough County, I had the same sort of thought, and I've heard that there's some debate within the county right now as to whether residential or industrial is best suited for South Hillsborough. So I think that there's a real opportunity for us to really understand what they are doing so that we can make sure our plans fit very nicely in with what they're doing. There's probably some opportunity there, if we don't already know, that we could take advantage of. The 70-foot right-of-way, I had the same question about utilities, so do I understand that the utilities will fit in the 70-foot right-of-way because they're already there in the right-of-way? Did I hear that correctly?
No, utility is not there in that right-of-way, but I don't believe, yeah, we have a 12-inch water line already there.
In the right-of-way?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, so the sewer line is not there, right?
No, the sewer line will be on the eastern section, which is not the 70 section.
Okay, because it balloons out.
There's an 85, then becomes 70, then it expands to 100.
So what else are we compromising on to reduce the right-of-way? We're obviously not going to do a median, we're not going to do sidewalks? Is that true?
See, the sidewalk, we talked about putting the sidewalk on the FPNL right-of-way, which is on the south side.
Pedestrian easement, be the outside of the right-of-way.
And we reduce our median immediately at 41, it just becomes a raised median, like a separator, and as we went east, where the right-of-way widens, we utilized, I believe, 22-feet median maximum.
Okay. And then I have a question about the floodplain. I appreciate that you guys show that on the map. Do we have any floodway in that area?
No floodway. Most of them, I think Tom could speak to that better, probably.
Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, Thomas Gersonberger, Stormwater Engineering Division Manager, Public Works Department. With respect to the floodplain delineation in this particular area associated with the port and the Tier One properties, the flood insurance rate maps are actually being amended as we speak. Those maps are also in the appeals process right now for the floodplain delineation in this particular area. When we're speaking of the 100-year floodplain associated with the port and the Tier One properties, it is strictly being modeled and looked at as far as the coastal storm surge affects, say, from hurricane or any type of coastal storm event. So there is no associated floodway with a coastal storm surge floodplain delineation.
Okay, thank you. And the PDEZ areas, so I think Betsy brought this up too. If they have plans approved, most of those plans were approved with every land use that we allow in Manatee County, including residential. So I just wonder if we've thought about any incentives, especially for Tier One, to drive people away from residential and towards the industrial development that we need?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something that we've considered doing.
That's a good point.
I think, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think we did that, what we called dual entitlements, where they could choose residential or industrial. I think it was further east from that. Tier One was PDEZ port-related, it's the beachfront. It was Curiosity Creek on the other side of the stacks and the projects further to the east that we gave dual entitlements to. So I'm not sure if they have residential options to the west of the Piney Point stacks.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure that's the case. I don't think they do, because that's an industrial area.
Yeah, so these are all zoned, like I said, most of these are zoned, the PDEZ, the dual entitlements are in the Tier Two and Tier Three areas.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
Okay, all right, that's good. And then I really appreciate when Cia talked about the reason that we don't build utilities ahead of development, and I, I'd like to hear more of that discussion every time we have a workshop, because I'm still asked very often from the public, you know, why don't we do a better job of just building roads and utilities because we know people are coming? And so it's, I think it's a really good education for the public to understand why we can't do that and why it doesn't make sense.
Oh, thank you. As I said, the issue becomes a liability, and you're basically installing dry lines that it's empty. That becomes a liability and a big issue there. I think Bill probably could explain a little bit better, but I believe the bond covenant doesn't allow it neither. We're not in a business of development speculation, meaning go spend the bond money to install the line with anticipation of they show up. I believe that's, that's a big key factor right there, too.
Thank you, I'm done.
Is there anyone else?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Chair, I would like to follow up if I could, I'm sorry, go.
Steve?
I've got two, I'm just going to defer to you.
Go ahead, Betsy.
No, I can wait till, I can go last, I can wait till all the commissioners are done, but I will, I will address some of the remarks Cia made.
Great report, and I appreciate it. I appreciate you all willing to mark it because I think we have a lot of information now, and like I said, my goal always was to try to get jobs, to diversify the county, that we're just not a bedroom community. I have a quick question, though, on if we go to the Buckeye Option One. Bud Roden, which will become, if we develop up there, Bud Roden will become a more important road. Probably most people don't even know where it is. There will be, because that's right at that 70-foot, isn't it?
Um.
Or very close. Will we be able to put a left-hand turn lane coming off of Buckeye? Because that road, you know, because we're also, and we're also talking, this is a truck road, you know, semis, farmers. Are we going to be able to do, you know, can we have five semis lined up in an 85-foot intersection?
31st.
And if you're driving a Hyundai, are you going to be scared?
Not any worse than on the, anywhere else.
If there is a development in that southwest corner, Bud Roden and Buckeye, yes, we will need a turn lane, and we could coordinate with that development of that piece to install the turn lanes and what have you. Remember, on the south side, you've got big FPNL transmission lines, you could, as long as we're not in conflict with their poles and what have you, which if you are, it becomes very expensive, but everything is doable. FPNL, they're very stringent, but they're always accommodating to an extent practical so long as both, both end is a, you know, winning proposition, basically.
So the 85-foot and the 70-foot will accommodate large trucks, dump trucks, cars without?
Correct.
And we'll be able to have a left-hand turn lane at Bud Roden, supposedly?
We would have to do, deal with it, yes. When that day comes, we have to deal with it because, again, both roads are on map five, and, and because they're on map five, we have to install the proper turn lane movements right or left.
Okay. Thanks, Cia.
Just a few things, the planners and the person that lives there, great. I was looking at, you know, I've been here since we approved this TIF to try to get some kind of stimulation. I was here with the White Hat, and a lot of you were in the private sector then, so you are very aware of it. And I think what we've missed the ball on is the advertising. And, you know, my thoughts would be, you know, you've got the slogan, "When you go into Port Manatee, right turn," then you're turning into the port. We haven't, as a county, as a government, you know, we can't market private property, but we could market our TIF. And I'm just writing down a few things that we can, and we need to get a professional, we just can't put it in a trade magazine to me if we really want to see some big boys come down and maybe invest money in hopefully in Manatee County. But, you know, we could do our staff, you know, like, we offer fast-track permitting, we're adjacent to Port Manatee, we're compatible for industry, we have access to the interstate. And I know that at the port, we have this large circle that we use where we service, and it goes all the way to Lakeland. And that, see, that's the part where the port does their advertising that the county doesn't see. And I think that's why Betsy had mentioned that, and we are on the Port Authority, so, and we've all had this presentation many times from the port. We go all the way to Charlotte County and all the way to Lakeland. And so I think we're missing an opportunity, and those TIF monies, I don't know if they could be used for a marketing campaign, not for individual properties, for our TIF. We only get like two, we've only got maybe $400,000 or $500,000 in it after all these years. Does anybody know how much we have in the reserves for the TIF? I see Jan here.
Which is below on this plan.
I did, but it's okay. It's embarrassing how much money we have, not much.
There's not much in there. I think there's, I don't know off the top of my head, but it is probably below $25,000 right now.
How could it have been that low? Because it was like a couple, $200,000, $300,000 a few years back, and we are, are we spending money out of it?
And I'll, I'll have to double check, so I don't know if I, but.
Wasn't this paid for by?
We did. Yes, that was paid for.
Oh, the study was?
Yes.
Okay, but I still think this is a good investment for Manatee County, it's a good return on investment, but we have to do it professionally, and we aren't the ones to do it professionally, they need to work with our staff and get the message out. I thought Aqua, like we do, I'm not thinking of them, but thinking of the stuff that they do for the TDC. They do all the marketing for Manatee County, and Sarasota uses somebody else. So I mean, we just need, and I know it's a lot of money, but there are certain things that we could do that we could get a better bang for our buck, and I don't think putting it in a trade magazines and putting for sale signs, it hasn't gotten us any way for the private sector to do it. But we don't want residential in these areas. I remember why we did this, and you all in the private sector remember that, the word up here. We do not want residential in this area. We want the bang for our buck, and we want industry. So I'm just asking if we consider some kind of marketing plan, and maybe you are, but I really think it needs to be, not better, but it needs to be beefed up.
Commissioner Whitmore, we completely agree with you. That was one of the top parts about marketing the area to position the land. One of the challenges beforehand is that there was a lot of confusion about really what was available, which property, the infrastructure. But now that we've done this analysis and we know what's there and what's available, now we can work collaboratively with the EDC, with the port, and try to get something done together. So that was one of the ideas for, as part of our work program, to try to get that branding as well as that marketing effort to do that.
Yeah, it's all about the brand and the message. It's all about it.
Right, absolutely. But now we have the background information to be able to do that. One thing I wanted to, as part of the questions and the discussion that I wanted to point out, is that here there's kind of two things going on. There's what it is that we can do right now, and as Commissioner Trey said about the jobs, and that's why focusing on that Tier One and the properties that are available and doing the marketing, you know, working with the property owners and the partners, of course, the EDC is really important because that's something that we can do now, and that we can look at working in the next 10 years to bring those jobs to be able to develop this area. And then as part of the utilities and the transportation and looking at more of the planning and the future part, that's very, very kind of long-range planning and long-term, kind of past the 20-year part on some of those. So it's kind of two, two separate things going on simultaneously, because in some of our discussions with FDOT as part of that, in terms of the, the interchange, they did say that that was like a 20-year kind of planning period. So just kind of keeping those timeframes, you know, here, we were focusing on, especially from our side, what can we do right now to get things going? But that is definitely on our list.
I've been here since, when we came up with this because of the recession, to try to get business and get jobs. And then I'm good, I'm glad to see that we have the Port Connector Road, even though everybody nixed it, and a lot of people, when I brought it up over the last year, so I don't remember it, but I'm glad it's back on a plan that actually it's something viable because we did, if I recall, when people developed, they did preserve right-of-way so that we could do something in the future. Am I, and Clark, am I wrong? I'm right? I'm wrong?
We worked with the developers on their plans at the time with that in mind.
Right.
I don't think they ever got to the point where they, they did development that far north in the properties to cause a dedication, so.
But we came up with an alignment. I remember years ago, there was like two or three alignments.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Well, again, we are doing something that, and maybe now's the time, the market, that we could do something and get it moving, and this plan, the plans that Betsy, you know, read through thoroughly, thank you. And this presentation today gives us pause, and I saw Alan's out here somewhere, to start moving forward on it, because we got something that he can put his teeth into when he's working up, doing something out there, too.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Oh, okay.
When you asked Karen Stewart, your deputy, and then Jan Brewer, they both have, I think, want to, we want to clarify on what we've spent the funds on, and the remaining balances right now.
Let me, let me just make one quick comment before they do that. From the way I look at this, is if I'm an industrialist coming here looking to build a big million-dollar, million-square-foot plant, I can go to Polk County and get it for $69,000 an acre, or I can come to Manatee at $120,000 an acre, and I'm gonna probably make the decision to go to Polk County, because they offer basically the same stuff. We offer as far as access to airports, ports, and things of that sort. So, I mean, I think we can do, you know, until we, you know, until either their land values come up or ours come down, it's gonna continually, gonna be a struggle to market the property to people, because business people are just, I mean, that's a huge variance between 69 and 120, I think you said, Jerry? I mean, come on.
Yeah, but it didn't stop Air Products.
You know? Huh?
Didn't stop Air Products. I mean, it has to be right...
Well, they needed the railroad to get to, to the port, but I'm just saying, you know, that to me is, is, you know, I agree, we need to market it, but we better, we have to find a better eggs, or, or better reason to, to, to get over that hump, one way or the other. So that's just, those are my thoughts. But go, go ahead, Sheri, maybe Karen.
I was gonna turn it over to Karen and Jan.
Good morning. Karen Stewart. So regarding the Port TIF, in the very beginning, the TIF went negative for several years during the downturn. Most recently, there's been about $130,000 a year earned. A couple of years ago, the, the TIF transferred $200,000 to the port to collaborate on South Dock Street with, along with Air Products. So it was the port, the county, and, and Air Products for the renovation of South Dock Street. And also, the study that we just completed with STANTEC was paid out of Port TIF, and the balance today is around $250,000.
That's better than nothing. Yeah. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a, a couple of remarks. I've, I've dealt with this a number of times now. I've been practicing here 16 years. I think this is maybe the fifth time that I've been in a meeting with the board where we talked about the opportunities and the incentives for development adjacent to the port. A couple of things. We're, we're talking about economic development, and Commissioner Whitmore, to address your, your question, there's no doubt that marketing the economic development potential around the port is a legitimate use of county funds, including the Port TIF funds. So that, that's an easy question to answer. The thing that we run into, that Sia was talking about earlier, the problem we run into, is that development is expected to bear certain costs of putting in infrastructure. And if local government advances those costs without the development actually there, you can wind up with stranded dollars. You are speculating in the future use of land, and both fiscally and legally, that's not something that we are supposed to do. When I started here in 2003, I had just spent five years at the law firm of Holland and Knight, which is a very, you know, heavy hitter firm, and I worked in the Orlando office where we represented Enterprise Florida. And so I had done quite a bit of economic development, and when I asked around how Manatee County was doing it, it was pretty depressing, quite honestly. The, is this still working? Can you all hear?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The tools that we had were just, were just not there. And today, it's completely different, and there are several people in this room who deserve a lot of credit for that. When you get into the realm of economic development, you can use public funds to help pay for the infrastructure costs that development otherwise has to shoulder, because it's going to bring jobs to your community. That is a legal public purpose for county funds. And there are some ways you can do that. And the county today takes full advantage of the state program, what we call the QTI program. We use the local incentives under 125045 Florida statutes, where we can pay for infrastructure and for impact fees. We have gone to the voters and gotten an ad valorem tax exemption for economic development approved. And there have been quite a few agreements done, you know, they've brought in Feld, Air Products, the IMG expansion. I mean, these are, these are pretty significant achievements for Manatee County, which didn't have a history of that until very recently. And there's the Port EZ and the TIF for the area around the port. So all the tools are there, and it's a county that knows how to do economic development. But every one of them requires an end user that can sign an agreement committing to bring that use to your county and to hire the people that they say they're going to hire in order to get the incentives. And that's, that's what you run into. You, you cannot go ahead and advance costs without somebody who's willing to come in and make those commitments. So I do agree, marketing to get people interested in it is really the last tool you have left. But I know what happens with the property owners, they say, "Well, is there more you can do?" But we really have exhausted every legally available option, and we have every tool available to us in the toolkit, if we can bring in users to the table who are willing to make those agreements with us. That's all I have.
Good comments.
Yeah, and sorry, I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the plan again, because obviously this plan has a lot of, the one that we, the hard copy that we received has a lot of information specifically about capital improvement programs. And that is a function of county government to plan for capital improvements. And if you look at the capital improvement plan, there's a lot of surrounding projects that surround this area, not a whole lot in this area. And that's because it's a chicken or the egg thing, right? We don't have anyone specifically ready to go. But if you look at the list of capital improvements on, in Moccasen Wallow, on Moccasen Wallow, Artisan Lakes, the, even the jail. So what occurred to me is this is a great snapshot in time. Unfortunately, lots of plans are like that, right? You don't have the benefit of seeing into the future, so a lot of it is based on information. And I bet some of this is outdated already, just from looking at it. Because, you know, things like the sales tax projects, sometime there's a little bit of shit. Things like the long-range transportation plan. Things like changes I, I wrote down didn't include Air Products, all of it, in this list of what's going on, of the projects. But, so this is probably gonna need to be looked at and updated sometimes, but this is a good marketing tool. But I want you, again, to look at it and see if you get the same impression that I did, that where there's a lot going around, on around this area, there's not a whole lot going on in this area. I understand why, because we don't have an end user, but it goes to Misty's point. You know, people ask us all the time, "Why don't you get out ahead and plan for this stuff?" Well, this is like Sia said, we can't, I, I get it on water and sewer, not so much on transportation. We need to plan for the transportation infrastructure, because we know it takes sometimes 20 years to implement those plans. Look at 44th, how long has that been in the plan? So we need to update our comp plan, make sure we're, we're certain that we can build this road in the right-of-way we got, and, and make sure that that's part of our marketing documents. Thanks.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Benak, one thing that the board should be aware of, for example, with the Piney Point Road connection, if you stand in the conference room of the multimodal office building at the port where the port meetings take place, and you look east across what we call the beachfront of the HRK property, you can see the space between the salt works and the uses on the other side, where Piney Point Road right-of-way has been reserved, and Air Products also reserved for South Dock Street. So at least where things aren't actually happening, those reservations are, are there. But there's, there just hasn't been any development happening anywhere else to have right-of-way reserved.
Reservation is great. That's, that's a great way to get to a road. We all know that...
Yeah, that's about all we can do right now.
That hopefully money follows construction plans, right, Clark? Isn't that the way it goes? We're not there, but we know the process.
At this point, we were going to open it up for public comment. So if there's anybody from the public that would like to come up, I guess there's a mic there. You'll have three minutes.
Oh, good morning. Alan Jones, I'm here as the owner of Curiosity Creek Project, as well as other properties in North County. I'm an EDC board member and also a, a board member of the Paris Civic Association. So I want to say, I'm probably gonna need more than three minutes, so if you will offer that time to me, I'd appreciate it. I really appreciate y'all's efforts today, and I agree with Mr. Clegg that we've been talking about this for a long time. Well, and I've been at every one of those meetings, and I feel like we've been beating a dead horse for a long time, but we're taking it to a new level now. So maybe we can revive this horse and get it running again. So not only for the county, but for EDC, jobs, as Commissioner Wisnaw spoke about, there's a lot of reasons why we need to make sure that we take care of this region of the county. Tier one, I was gonna go through some things here. Tier one, it wasn't really until just recently that we understood that tier one had capacity for sewer. So when the question was asked about the Reader property, whether anything's happened there, I know that for a fact that he's had a number of presentations with the county where he was told there was not capacity for his project. So I think just here in the past six or eight weeks, that, that's come to light, and so I think there'll be some new activity in his property because of that. Speaking also with tier one, is that the clear messaging that needs to be brought forward through the EDC about that infrastructure and the available capacity is a key component in the marketing campaign? Tier two and tier three, I mean, that's really where my properties are, in Buckeye Road corridor, where there's some conversations about property pricing. If we can get the road infrastructure there, I think all the water and sewer is in place for us to move forward with potential developments in that area. As, as we get more properties in line, companies that don't need that Highway 41 visibility, we can have Buckeye Road set up in a way that will provide these companies with the access and infrastructures that they need for their companies to succeed. So I think it's gonna take a very proactive effort to get that. Currently, if any of y'all have ridden down Buckeye Road in the last so many years, it's, it's gone from bad to worse with the impact of the DOT dirt pit. There's a couple hundred trucks a day that run down that road specifically for that dirt pit, and it's beaten it to death. It's fallen off in the shoulders, and there's been a number of wrecks there recently, trucks running off the road and things such as that. It's, it's a real problem. And so I, I'd like to speak and, and bring something to the table here specifically about how can we spearhead this? How can we come together as public landowners and how can, with your efforts that y'all are doing here with the county, is it, if there are opportunities for a public-private partnership for the development of Buckeye Road? The infrastructure of water and sewer, I think pretty much all that has been in place for many years through the White Hat efforts and the public pilot partnership that was put in place at that time. If we can get the proper variances to allow this four-lane right-of-way within the existing, our four-lane road within the existing right-of-way, that's a huge component of, of getting Buckeye Road built to a manner that Ms. Hillstrom and Max Stewart with EDC can bring potential customers down Buckeye Road and show them property that isn't worth, that can be bought less than $120,000 per acre. And so this is something I really want to bring to the table, if we can discuss about it and get the proper people together in a room and, and hash out an idea of a public-private partnership to build Buckeye Road out as a super two, so to speak, at this particular time, which would be the four-lane right-of-way, and just have two lanes, if that's the answer, or potentially have it four lanes. And, you know, let me make sure that y'all understand what I'm talking about. It's basically from the Interstate 241. That is the region, region we're talking about. And, you know, I think it will, will stimulate development for jobs within that region if we can have that viability of, of a, of a, of great transportation. People can see the vision versus what they're seeing today when they ride down Buckeye Road. The other thing I wanted to mention was the interchange. I appreciate Commissioner Benak bringing that up. There are efforts in place today to put that interchange in Hillsborough County. I think that we'd really be a mess to realize that that tax base needs to be here in Manatee County. And we've got a great opportunity to do some good things here. It takes planning. This is the first, first planning efforts that I've really seen that can take us to where we need to be. And I appreciate those efforts, and that's pretty much all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to come down and speak?
Good morning. Sharon Hillstrom with the Bridenton Area Economic Development Corporation, and...
Max Stewart with the Bridenton Area Economic Development Corporation.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Jerry and her team for having this market analysis done for us. You know, Commissioner Whitmore, you were talking about marketing and branding the area, which is what our job is at the EDC, right? So prior to this, what we talked about, about this area is we have a lot of land around the port to be developed. Essentially, that's what we talked about. But now we have some clear assets that we can market to potential users in the work that we do. Commissioner Johnson, you made a really, really good point about land costs. That has been an issue for us. We have had potential users come to Manatee County to look at potential projects. Nucor is an example of a company that we had probably, Max, how many conversations did we have with them?
Four or five.
Four or five conversations with them. They ultimately ended up in Polk County, and it was due to land price. And just to give you an example, that was 800 jobs, a wage of about $66,000 a year average, and a $250 million capex. So imagine if we would have had something like that in our area, in the northwest Manatee area, and then that TIF would be growing even at a better pace. So we absolutely look forward to really drilling down on a more dedicated marketing focus and branding for that area. Max has worked very closely with SRQ, with the airport. We have a whole business development strategy around the airport, and we're making some real strides there. I might remind everyone that this, I always say this economic development is a long-term proposition, so if instant gratification is important, you do not get into this line of work. It takes a lot of time and a lot of great planning. So we are making great strides, I have to say. You know, speaking to comments that were made earlier about where we were back in 2003 and where we are today in 2020, we are an entirely different community. So we did our strategic planning, we had consultants come in and say, "Do you realize what you have here?" And we said, "Yes, we do, and we're doing a great job." All of us working together, we're doing a great job marketing this community as a business destination. So I'm glad that we have some of these new assets in place that we can market. I also think, just to put it out there, that county-owned property is a gem, and we've had some conversations about what that could look like with Jerry and her team. We actually met with Commissioner Trace to talk about it as well. Some exciting things that potentially we could pursue to kind of put that out there as a lead generator. So again, thank you, Jerry, to her team. Thank you, county, for funding that market analysis that will absolutely help us as we endeavor to market that northwest Manatee property in a much more effective way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to come down and speak? Seeing nobody, we will close public comment. Carol?
Again, it worked well before. I don't know how everybody feels about it now. I really don't know whose district is this in, Reggie's or Priscilla's? Priscilla's. In, years ago, Amy Stein did, was the commissioner liaison with the White Hat Group and with staff. But then there was at least a commissioner on it, and then they would talk to Ernie and Ed at that time, what was going on to keep, you know, and the staff would, too. I really think to keep this going, like Alan said, I mean, I've been up here since 2006, and I see Alan come up all the time about this entire issue for many years. I think we're moving forward, and the public-private partnership, I think that's how we did the White Hats. You know, they funded a big part of it, but then they got the credits back. There are, we do need the private sector, and we do need government to do this. And I would just think that I would, I have no problems, the district commissioner and staff and this group of interested parties, they need to realize their prices are a little too high. Maybe they need to, you know, think... Maybe they need to, you know, think about, really, if you want to get something built, you may have to come down a little bit. But now that we actually have like a footprint and we've got possibly a plan, I don't want, and thank you, Priscilla, because you brought this up out of the clear blue to do a study during our budget time, and we were kind of like, whoa. So nobody had ever asked that from your district commissioner that I can recall. So good job. But I mean, let's, don't break the momentum. I don't want to see this on a shelf again. I know it won't, but I would like it. I am immediate gratification in medical, as you know, as your husband is Sharon. But I would like it to keep moving forward. So I think that we should at least consider something like we did that worked very well years ago on North County.
Betsy?
Yeah, I can say that I, and Sia is aware of this, that we met, I met, with all of the property owners, had meetings, series of meetings. We priced out Buckeye Road, what it would cost to build Buckeye Road. I don't know how many years ago that was, and then nothing happened. You're going to have a hard time. You know, Alan is the only one that basically is hanging in there. The other ones are, you know, nothing happens. Why do we go to these meetings? Nothing happens. It's been extremely frustrating. If Priscilla can get her done, I say let's get her done. But you heard, the county's not going to build a road before the development's there. Because you know how we pay for roads? Impact fees.
That is exactly right.
So we do have to think of some plan. And that's why I said we needed at least to look at this from a capital improvement planning standpoint. You know, we have capital improvement plans for roads that don't have developments on them, that are paying impact fees today, let me say Moccasen Wallow. You know, we need to be careful about saying we can't do that. Because that can be very, you know, that can be, make people think, I'm not going to get involved anymore. Because you can do it. You can do the planning. And this is more information than we've had. There's also sometimes grants available for economic development. And if we could figure out how to get there. I remember when Flowers Bakery came in, we got all the money from the state to four-lane the road. A little bit different, but, you know, those things are available. I did have a question I forgot to ask. And Alan kind of alluded to this. Why do we now have available Ten Inch Forestman when we told people that there was nothing available before? What has changed? That was one of my questions I wrote down, but I failed to ask it.
Madam, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Benak. I tried to explain it on the master plan diagram. For years and years, you're correct, even Reader's Ranch, we used to tell folks their sewer is not available. Oh, there was the Ten Inch and that coming from the port going south, but as that Ten Inch came south, it joined Moccasen Wallow and other properties south of 275 corridor. They all end up north going through the same line. Over the course of past six, seven years between Willow Walk, Travesta, Country Walk, Silverstone, Willow Hammock, we rearranged the sewer needs on the southern portion of the quadrant south of 275 interstate. As we did that, we made the sewer available on the north side. So it was, as much as the goal was to address the port need by virtue of dealing with the property south of 275, the byproduct, it was south of 275, it just boomed. I mean, all of a sudden, you had Willow Walk Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, Willow Hammock, Country Walk. I mean, there's the old Jackson Road, the old golf course, all of them. They all, they all just opened up and bloomed because of that. So that effort had two results. One, the boom south of 275, the number one concept was though, to make port sewer available. And that made that available, it basically materialized as a result. So yes, 10 years ago, Karen Stewart knows, we used to tell everybody sewer's not available. But don't make people go away. Let's sit down, see what the needs are, and see how we could accommodate. And that's how we accommodated air product, as a matter of fact. Air product developed during the era that sewer was not available. But that's the effort that went in with all those participations south of 275 that created the availability of the sewer at the port.
Oh, that's good to know. And again, I'll just point out that in this plan, it talks about two-thirds of 6,000 acres of the Little Manatee South Community Plan, which is in Hillsborough County, belonging to common ownership, which allows for unified development approach, promote employment centers, a variety of residential products. It says that these centers would provide opportunities for job creation that can take advantage of economic engine of Port Manatee and create opportunity for spin-off activities from the port activities. This is quoting from the Hillsborough County plan. Okay? So I guess I like to be a little bit competitive, but y'all need to be aware of this. And especially, it talks about an employment center is envisioned to be located at Velroy Road, US 41, which is as close, if not closer, to Port Manatee than to many of the vacant lands within our primary study area. So we need to do something.
Let's be bold. Somebody said that before. Let's be bold.
Okay, any other questions? Not, we'll take eighth.
Just real quick, did we get a consensus that we could look at something if Betsy or Priscilla or somebody wants to get things moving? I don't want to just have another meeting and come back in a few months and get a report.
There are some things moving, and we would have to come back with EDC and Jerry.
So you are working with people?
Of course.
Well, okay, well, we need to, I have no problems with that, the district commissioner. I just, maybe can we get a report if, from Sherry individually at some points, if you can't, whatever you're doing publicly or whatever? You know, I just would like to know that we are moving, because this, I don't know. And I'm a district commissioner.
I don't think there's actually anything to actually report yet, except that we're working on something.
I think Sherry will keep us posted.
Yeah, could somebody?
I will.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay. At this point, we'll take a five-minute recess before we start the ADA. Give everybody a chance to stretch their legs.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Charlie Bishop, Director of Property Management. It's my pleasure to introduce Carmine D'Amelio, our ADA Compliance Officer for Manatee County. Just a quick reminder, this is just a report, no action, no future action required. In addition, I want to appreciate what the board's done for us over the years. You continue to fund a decision unit that allows us to stay in compliance with our parks and facilities. In addition, you funded this year a study with Tyndale Oliver, which will allow us to develop an ADA transition plan. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Carmine.
Good morning and thank you. I'll be brief. We, it's more of an update than a presentation. We're going to talk about the transition plan, where we're at and where we're going. I want to talk a little bit about standards and the laws, but I'm going to stick to Title II. There's so many branches and titles in Americans with Disabilities Act. But we're Title II, we're state and local government, and that's where the transition plan lies. I'm Carmine D'Amelio. I've been in parks and recreation and property management for 30 years. I've been informally involved with ADA compliance since 1991, when the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed. I have a passion for it, and I've formally been involved since 2016, when I became certified as an ADA Compliance Coordinator. This is Brian Weinstein. He's an engineer, specializes in ADA compliance. We are in contract with them right now, and he's doing all of our assessments at our The Department of Justice states that Manatee County must have an inclusive evaluation of its policies, programs, and facilities, and we must determine if the individuals with disabilities may be restricted from these programs or activities. Basically, a transition plan identifies the modification of the facilities, public rights of ways, and programs. And then it's a guide for us to plan and implement the deficiencies. Part of our objective was to inventory all of our conditions at our facilities, identify and prioritize our improvements, develop a phasing plan, and then obtain input from the public. Bit of a history, in 2016, when I became certified, Charlie and I put our heads together and said, hey, we've got compliance issues, let's start, you know, attacking these. And being that we had staff in the field already, in parks and playgrounds, and some at the libraries, and out at the beaches, it was kind of easy for us to assess and form a makeshift transition plan and start attacking some of these deficiencies to become compliance. And we did a really good job. Before that time, we didn't have an ADA transition plan. These are some of the things that we implemented. This is, the first one is at Cortez Beach, we installed some parking spaces. We installed some hearing loops in the chambers. Down at the bottom, on the left, is Fort Hammer Park. We added some ADA sidewalks and parking, and we're allowed to get the disabled to the pavilion and restrooms. And down here at the beach, Manatee Beach, we have our changing stations and our shower towers for easy access. Here's some more. We have compliant parking now at the property appraisers. Down at the bottom, Palmisola Park allows the disabled to get to the playground, as well as the park bench. Down at the bottom right, Bishop Point, we didn't have any parking out there. We didn't even have access to the picnic tables for view of the Manatee River. And up top is the admin building, we put in some auto door openers. And here are some more, Rocky Buff Library, ADA Compliance Throughpass, with a little viewing area, reading area for the disabled, some signage for service animals. This is one of my favorites. This is Cortez Beach. There's an ADA ramp there, and a few years back, the ramp just dead-end there. So whoever was on a wheelchair or anybody that was disabled would just reach the bottom of that ramp and just kind of reach out and say, wow, I'd really like to view that, view the beautiful view of the Gulf. And so what we did was we added some ADA compliant, the material's called True Grid, and we can get a field permit with that. And we had a little lookout area, so you can actually come off of the ADA ramp. And here's a picture of a disabled person actually enjoying the view. That's one of my favorite pictures. So going forward, outside of my division, it just became too cumbersome and too involved with staff time, and we didn't, we didn't have the resources to continue. So that's when we contracted with Tyndale Oliver. And our first three assessments were the Judicial Center, GTBRA Administration, and the Historic Courthouse. Some of the items that we inventoried were the courtrooms, employee workstations and areas, a means of egress, the accessible routes, the restrooms, the drinking fountains, signage, elevators, swimming pool, and assembly areas. And some of the things, just the generic things that we looked for, are the heights and floor space for water fountains, things like on the bottom left is door heights, tactile or, and the floor space on the bottom for braille. And over here is protruding items, the height and the protruding distance out, and the maximum level of, the minimum level of the protrusion height. During our assessments, we needed to figure out how we're going to prioritize. And Tyndale Oliver, Brian, he came up with a plan for high, medium, and low based on the severity of the assessment. In the high ranges, and we qualified each of these in our assessment package, they were major, the high concerns were the major safety issues. That would be like a crack or a sinkhole in one of the walking paths or accessible routes. And then we went into the medium, and we talked about non-compliant amenities and moderate slopes. And then we went into low, where we had non-compliant signage and minor slopes. And the quick fixes, which we're doing right now with internal staff, they're the simple things like signage and barrier removal and doorknobs. And we're doing that right now with internal staff. So our implementation plan, the plan is simply a guide. It tells us the locations, and they may vary from time to time based on what we assess at the next stage. Some of the improvements will need to be reviewed as they're developed, and then the completion of each study will ensure the commitment of future cost. Our next steps are to mitigate the barriers, we're already in progress, conduct public meetings with the help of Neighborhood Services and Debbie DeLeon. She helped me put together some public meetings, which went very well. And then create a plan, a five-year plan, a five-plus plan, and then the next facilities. The Department of Justice has their guide, and this is what's required by them to be compliant with an ADA transition plan. We have to designate an ADA coordinator, develop and postings of the ADA policy, develop and postings of a grievance procedure, complete a self-evaluation, develop a transition plan, and then name and position the official person responsible for the transition plan. So with that said, we have an ADA coordinator that's completed. We provide public notice and ADA requirements, that's completed. Same thing with the grievance procedure. And in four, five, six, and seven, we're in the process right now, and that's our transition plan. This is our proposed schedule. It's spaced out for the next nine to 10 years. This can be changed at any time, depending on how the assessments come in. We have over 60 facilities, three transfer centers, 61 parks, beaches, and preserves, lots of programs and policies and procedures. And you can see, we have an abundance of public right-of-ways. And that's pretty much it. So I can assure you, I can assure you that we are in compliance. I have a book over, I have a book over here, our ADA Compliance Book and Transition Plan. So we don't have...
Carol?
Yeah, just, just real quick. First of all, I want to tell you, Charlie, that you have a great employee here. And actually, you both complement each other.
Thank you.
And I think you've done a wonderful job for the past few years, well, since the beginning, but I think you're getting more comfortable. And I just want to compliment you both that when you get a project, you guys, as Priscilla would say, is get her done. From somebody that now has a spouse that's majorly handicapped, I appreciate all the stuff that you're doing. Just even trying to think of going to that thing this weekend, what's it called?
The Symphony on the Sand.
The Symphony on the Sand. I have to try to figure out how to get people to help me get my husband on a chair. But where is that, at Kokina? Because I want to take him, he wants to go to the beach, and I can't do it by myself.
This is at Cortez Beach.
Oh, one of the three piers?
We have an ADA ramp.
Okay.
And it's at the bottom of that.
So it's one of the three piers on the Cortez Beach?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good. I'm going to, but anyway, I just want to tell you, thank you very much, and this is very much needed. Thanks for all your hard work.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Betsy?
Maybe you said it and I missed it, because I was out of the room at the very beginning. How do we pay for all of these improvements? How are they, are they all capital improvements, or how do we pay for them all?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. We've been fortunate, the board over the past several years have funded us $100,000 for ADA compliance issues, which we spend every year at our preserves, parks, and facilities. Recently, this past fiscal year, you funded $100,000 to allow us to hire Tyndale Oliver through a decision unit, which will be phased over eight to 10 years. And Carmine has one addition, he wants to talk to you about what transit's doing.
Okay. Yes, Commissioners, it is something that we have, we're looking at short and long-range planning on. So you'll see over the course of the next several years how these are prioritized and added as potential requests.
My understanding, Jenny, is to be in non-compliance with ADA, the penalties are fairly severe. That'd be, you know, the correct way to say it, and that, you know, we're now moving through those steps, that they give us a lot of leeway to do it, but if we're not doing it, they can make our lives miserable, I guess.
Yeah, that's correct. So, the Department of Justice requires a transition plan, which we now have. So, the threat of federal funding being taken away from us is no longer. The last conference that I attended, we had some prominent guest speakers from the Department of Justice from Washington, and they were, they were firm and direct, stating that they're going to, in 2020, have some spot checks, state and local governments, to see what kind of transition plan they have. If they didn't have one, they were going to create one of their own, the county or city was going to pay for it, and then only allow them three years to comply with it. So, Florida's on the list in 2020, and we're okay. So I have no worries about that.
Mr. Chair, the board should also be aware that it is, it is a very fertile ground for civil litigation. There is a citizen suit provision in the ADA that allows anyone with standing to sue, and there are some firms that have gotten very good at it, and they do it in federal court, and they get significant attorney's fees awards. So that's, that is another area of substantial liability.
Morgan and Morgan.
Some of them are more sophisticated than that.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll open it up to public comment. Anybody from the public would like to come down and talk? I have three minutes. Seeing nobody from the public come down, we'll close public comment. No other questions. We'll be adjourned until 1:30.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Carmine.
Thanks, Commissioner.